For the Zoom attendees, just wanna let you know there'll be just a couple more minutes, please.
Good evening and thank you for joining us for committee interviews being held just before our council meeting this evening. We will be interviewing two candidates for vacancies on the Parks and Recreation Committee. So, welcome to our applicants. We have John Kell and Bonnie McEvoy. And we will start with John and then go back and forth with the order of who goes first for answering each additional question. And please try to limit your answers to around one minute each. So we'll go ahead and start with me opening and giving the opening question and then we'll go through some others with the other council members. So this first question, I'll wait till we see John up on the screen. Sure, yeah, let's go ahead and do that. John, can you hear us? Go ahead, John.
I can hear you now.
Perfect. And Bonnie, do you wanna do a sound check? Can you go, can you hear us? Bonnie, can you unmute? There you go, almost. Bonnie, can you unmute? There you go.
Do you hear me now?
We do, perfect. Okay, we'll go ahead and start.
Okay.
Okay, fabulous. Alright, so the first, we'll start with John first on question number one, so John will answer and then Bonnie. One minute, please. Sorry, rookie, rookie move, I did not have my phone on silent. Okay, so John, members of the Parks and Recreation Committee advise the city. Again. Okay, John, for reals this time, okay? Members of the Parks and Recreation Committee advise the City Council and Planning Commission on topics related to recreation, parklands, trails, and public facilities. Why are you interested in serving on the committee and what special skill set can you provide to this advisory committee?
Okay, yeah, thanks for, thanks for the chance to interview. Sorry, I had to move a little bit, be closer to my Vesprouter. Um, I use, um, parks and trails all the time. Um, I have a seven-year-old and eleven-year-old. And can you guys hear me correctly? And, and what, what I see is, is, uh, in, in, in its ranks, I mean, our green spaces, our horse trails, they're just so amazing, such an amazing thing to be able to partake in. Me in my position as a school nurse at Arcade High, what I see is, I see, um, maybe not as much infrastructure for that age group. Um, many of them skateboard, many of them roller skate or walk. And I hear from many of them to, to be able to go to their favorite park, accessing the, the bike lanes or the sidewalks, um, seem to be troublesome. So my goal is to try and look at not just, you know, the parks, but how we get to those parks. Can people get to those parks on, on what form of transportation they prefer? And, um, I want to, um, definitely give my input on, uh, maybe modification of the parks that we have to make them more inclusive for that age group. Teenagers oftentimes get left out of, um, kind of the park planning, make a bunch of stuff for, you know, two, two to twelve-year-olds. So that's what I would like to do.
Thank you, John. Okay, Bonnie. Members of the Parks and Recreation Committee advise the City Council and Planning Commission on topics related to recreation, parklands, trails, and public facilities. Why are you interested in serving on the committee and what special skill set can you provide to this advisory committee?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, I don't know that I have a special skill set. I'm not a politician. I've lived in, um, Humboldt County for about forty years and raised my sons here. My sons are both very active in, uh, music. And also we spend hours and hours outside. I still do. I walk every day. I've been a physician here for forty years and taken care of a lot of people. And my personal bent is that a large part of health is being outside and being safe. I, I love living here. I'm one of Humboldt's biggest cheerleaders. I think my skill set has to do with being very organized. I've been on some boards. And just my experience, my exposure, I think I know most of the trails here backwards and forwards. I don't really have an agenda, except that I don't want to be Senator, or Mayor, or President at this point in my life. But I wanted to do my part to help somewhere. So I think I would like to be more of an open book and bring what gifts and what things you need from me. And I think I could rise to that, um, request if you have it.
Alright, thank you, Bonnie. So, um, in this next round, it'll be Councilmember Matthews and Bonnie, you'll be answering first.
Okay.
Hi Bonnie, please share about an experience that has connected you with Arcata's parks, open space, and/or recreational opportunities.
Well, I just went on a kayak trip in Trinidad Bay looking for whales. And that was life-changing, like most things around here. Um, I also am learning to be a meditation instructor. And one of the, the things that I'm learning to do is walking meditation, and I would very much like to teach people how to use the forest and the trees for that. I've recently done a reading about, um, how the trees communicate with each other through their roots and the mycelium. Uh, that fascinates me that there's another nation of creatures on the planet that, um, have needs and, and grow and coexist with us and, and I think our job is, as stewards of the planet, if we're not at least co-equal, is to take care of them. And, um, I'm very motivated to do that. Um, I love our forests and I think it's where I spend most of my time.
Thank you so much. John, please share about an experience that has connected you with Arcata's parks, open space, and/or recreational opportunities.
Um, I have really been enjoying the bay trail that takes you almost all outside of the city limit. I have skateboarded down to that, that, uh, the rocks there at the end. Um, uh, three times this last week. Um, and there's really nothing like being right next to Arcade Bay, the beautiful, you know, water. You know, you, 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 you're, you're relatively close to traffic, but it's not distracting. And I'm, I'm, I've talked to a few of my friends and said, you know, you've gone all the way down, like, it's, it's a, it's a trip to be in that part of the bay to look out, to look back, see HSU on the hill, see, um, you know, you can pretty much see like how the, the hills in near Wildberries look. It just gives you this amazing kind of awe-inspiring view of, of our town. And, um, so I, I am very grateful to, um, the smooth surfaces um, that can get, um, you know, a skateboard or a scooter, my son scoots, um, to get us out there and to be able to experience that is truly unique.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, so for this next question, John, you'll be going first and it'll be Councilmember Watson, um, asking this next question.
What do you see as upcoming challenges and opportunities for the city's parks, facilities, and recreation offerings?
Um, challenges, I'm not sure, you know, as, as we, you know, pack more folks in, which I agree with, uh, you know, the college will benefit, will benefit then in turn from, from how the, how Cal Poly will, will benefit from, you know, having more rooms for people to live in. Um, how much space can be set aside to like do urban parks? Um, may get tricky, um, as people, um, you know, think about cutting up their land and selling it to developers, so, um, I hope that we have, you know, kind of longer terms strategic, um, uh, outlook toward trying to put those, those potential places, um, you know, aside ahead of time. And, um, you know, the other concern I do have, and, and I'm going to be, um, kind of heavy on the, the, the skateboarding thing because I, I, I just see so many of, of today's teens choosing that as their number one mode of transportation. And, and so to have a skate park in just like one part of our city is, is difficult for a lot of them. Um, and with the transition in other cities to, to building like a skateable feature, just a small feature, maybe in the corner of a park, uh, you know, kind of away from the smaller children, that's been a way for, um, cities to get, you know, move away from these kind of these deserts that leave skaters that live, live maybe in roller skaters that live in a further flung part of the city from, from being able to access that. So as far as things that I, I look forward to and I, and I think that we could expand, I think that we've done a really good job making the city feel bike-friendly. But I have to tell you, when I'm on my skateboard and all of a sudden that bike trail shrinks down to about twelve inches wide and I've got cars, you know, coming at me, and I know that it's not gonna be okay for me to just go over there on the sidewalk. Um, it's, it seems like it's difficult, um, to, to safely, you know, have the fun that I wanna have. So I think that, that could be, um, a really positive thing to not only make it a, a bike-friendly lane, but to make it a multi-use friendly lane. Um, because bikes can handle when a sidewalk ends or, or when a, a larger bike lane ends and maybe there's a little bit shrubbery growing into the road. But other forms of transportation can't handle that. Roller skates can't handle that. Roller blades can't handle that. Scooters can't handle that. And skateboards can't handle that. So I think that, um, that's a really cool opportunity to, to kind of look at that, um, that disappearance of the ability to get around for other modes of transportation as a positive, because you really don't have to add much to the road and maybe a little bit of signage to remind people that skateboarders and biker and, and, and roller skaters are pedestrians too. Oftentimes we kinda get clipped or we get honked at and it's a little scary.
Thank you very much. And if you'd like me to repeat Bonnie, I'm sorry, the Bonnie question, if you'd like me to repeat the question, Bonnie, just let me know.
No, I think I'm good. It was a, a good question and, and I appreciate John's answers. I, I agree with him and think that they were well thought out. Um, I would add that I think as things change as dramatically as they might here with the addition of or the conversion of HSU to Cal Poly, we could see a surge in population and there're gonna be some new issues that come up for us that none of us may ever have dealt with before. Um, and we don't wanna see urbanization of what green that we have. Um, I would think it's gonna be important to use education as much as we can, if we can educate people about what it means to have green space and what the, the walks and the spiritual things that we have around here to do, what meaning they have to the individuals, and then just the greater good of having more trees and more open spaces um, for our psyche and for our quality of life, that people will come to respect it and, and do their bit to make it, make it as good and keep it as good as it is. I do some pickup, uh, once a month with Reese and his gang on the trails and I've learned just from that exposure and that experience that every time I walk now, I notice something when it's on the ground and I take a bag with me and I pick things up. So just that, not really indoctrination, but exposure to people who care and, and making an effort to try to keep things clean has come with me and, and kind of, um, internalized and it's become a habit for me. So I think education and communication and bringing issues up with the leaders in their various area, like the best skateboarders, the best bikers, you know, they know more about the wheels than I do and the issues that their people have. I think we just need to keep communication open and educate each other and, and respect each other as well as our, our trees and our open areas.
Thank you, Bonnie. So our next question will be asked by Vice Mayor Schaefer and Bonnie, it will, uh, go to you first.
Okay.
Well, thank you folks for being here. Bonnie, um, how do you think Arcata can create more inclusive parks and recreation programs and other opportunities for our community?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Um, how do you think Arcata can create more inclusive parks and recreation programs and opportunities for our community?
Um, inclusive. Well, I think there's, there's probably ongoing right now grouped, um, activities for various ages of school kids. I homeschooled my kids and we had a lot of different groups that would get together and it seemed like a really unique experience to me, having been a public school, very much grade level type of student, to have all the different ages mixed together. Um, I think in bringing elders into things is a good way to, to include people. Um, I don't know if that's where you were going with this, but I think it's, it's important that as a community, we all recognize that there's ways for these green areas to be used and appreciated by all of us, not just singularly, but together. Um, and I think again, it comes down to education, creating events that, that bring people together. Um, and interfacing, um, you know, people have different ideas and part of the, the beauty of diversity is that we have new ideas and we learn new things and we expand our contacts. Um, how best to do that? I, I feel like I'm a, a pretty open person to other people, but I know some people are closed down and sometimes the best way to bring understanding between groups is to bring them together. And that is a big picture, um, idea of how I would approach it. I, I'm, I hope that's what you were asking for.
Wonderful. Yeah, no, thank you, Bonnie.
Okay.
Yeah, no, great, great responses and same question then to you, John. Uh, how do you think Arcata can create more inclusive parks and recreation programs and opportunities for our community?
Yeah, um, programs, I think, um, you know, communicating about certain programs in, in effective or new ways, like, uh, to tell you the truth, I don't know about, I don't know about many programs. I know, I know that there used to be like the little Jujitsu Hut. I know that in summertime, there's like a camp option up at Rutherford Park. I know that there's skate camp at the skate park. I don't know if you guys run that or if that run out, out of amp or something like that. Um, so I guess, like, you know, advertising, maybe in new ways, maybe through social media or little buttons that you can put on your profile picture or something like, I'm going to this. That could be, that could be cool. As far as, um, the, you know, do we have, the second part of the question, can you read that again? Wanna answer it?
Um, yeah, I mean, just more, how can Arcata create more inclusive parks and recreation programs and opportunities for our community? And I know you alluded to some of those, um, previously in senior responses as well.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. So one of the things that I've been talking to students about is, um, you know, like the fact that like many of, many of the high school students that I'm, that I, um, chat with and talk with and they're my patients. I, I, I always try and have a conversation, like, what are you doing? How are you recreating? What are you, like, I don't wanna hear that you're working out at the gym. I wanna hear that you're like, you're, you're starting a hobby and you're doing something. And, um, many times the, the answer is, oh, no, I go ride, um, my bike in the forest and that's, and that's, and that's fine. I have a whole other subsection of students that, that don't, they don't kind of afford to ride a bike or they're just not into bike. And, and I would say that like between the two major modes, like I said before, biking and skating, one of the things that I would, I would think would be pretty easy to do is to kind of open up our parks to invite, um, twelve and up, um, students to have, students or, or, or kids to have a place um, to, to do something kind of fun, like something that they would do um, while they're watching their, their siblings for their parents. You know, I see that all the time where the, the, the teenagers will just be sitting down at a bench instead of themselves, um, doing something. Or if they do do something, they feel silly and then as soon as a little kid comes over to what they're, you know, they jump off of that, that, um, part of the park. And so I feel like there's kind of this like, parents feel comfortable at the park 'cause they're, you know, with their kid. But the teenagers bringing their kids down there, they just kind of feel, you know, like there's not much to do. So I, maybe if there was like a place to roller skate or if there was a little ramp that people could have their skateboards with, these are my ideas. I, I think of the park over by, um, you know, behind the skate park. Um, we in the like having little kids world, we call your parks different names than they are. So we call that park the UFO swing park because it has that big UFO swing in it. Um, we call the one over on St. Louis Road the spinny park, um, even though it has an official name. But that, that park has, um, tennis courts, got bocce ball. It has a decent amount of place for somebody to skate, skate. But if we had like a skater skateboard feature or a little place for like roller skaters, it would also benefit them by, by staying off the tennis court, which does a ton of damage. So I think there's ways to open up our parks. So you'll see more of, 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 a broad age group. And once again, just talking to the, the students that I talk to every day, I do feel like there's a genuine feeling like there's no real place for them, um, after school. And so, uh, you know, a lot of them do go to the skate park and, and a lot of them, um, don't. And so I think that there, there would be maybe some opportunity for us to open it up um, to be more inclusive to that, um, teens to twenties to thirties segment that still wants to recreate in a park.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any, um, other questions for the candidates?
Am I saying this correctly that Deborah Coles has been on there for forty years?
You are. Yeah, just going for the record.
I think she's gonna make it.
Okay, so, um, that concludes, um, the interview and so thank you both very much for showing up. We will be, um, discussing this later on in our regular meeting. So if you'd like to tune in for that, we will be talking about you. So thanks for showing up.
Okay, thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, we've got about four minutes until six, so we'll take a short break and then we'll be back at six o'clock for our regularly scheduled meeting. You're welcome. Um, we've got about four minutes until six, so we'll take a short break and then we'll be back at six o'clock for our regularly scheduled meeting.
Yes, I will test it again.
Good evening and thank you for viewing the May fourth meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. If you would like to, please join us for the flag salute.
At the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Schaefer.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. So if you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, you will line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged on to Zoom, click raise your hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. For each item, we will be taking remote public comment first and then moving to the in-person comments. We won't be going back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment remotely, please raise your hand or press star nine as soon as the public comment is requested for that item. So next we have ceremonial matters. As part of ceremonial matters this evening, I would like to open with a moment of silence in memory of Taya Gast and in recognition of her contributions to Arcata. Taya served on the Parks and Recreation Commission from nineteen seventy-five to nineteen eighty-two. Her contributions included the design and construction of Redwood Park Lodge, supporting the purchase of several new city parks, the sustainable harvest of the city's forest, the construction of the Larson Park tennis courts, and the creation of joint use agreements to share public spaces between Arcata schools and Arcata Parks and Recreation. In nineteen eighty-two, she was elected to two terms, that's eight years, on the Arcata City Council and served as mayor from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen eighty-eight. During her tenure on the council, the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary was developed and Kamawapa became Arcata's sister city. Taya traveled to Nicaragua to promote cultural, educational, and humanitarian exchanges between the two towns. She continued to serve our community until her final hours. She was an aspiring elected official, mother, wife, friend, and mentor to many of us. The city sends our condolences to her family and will remember her as one of our greats. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. And at the end of our meeting, we will also adjourn in her honor. Um, so next we have some proclamations and so, um, the way that it works is one of the council members will read the proclamation and then if the, um, recipients are here in person, we will meet you, um, down to present the, um, proclamation to you and shake your hand. And then if you would like, you can go to the podium and say something, um, in regards to that proclamation. So the first proclamation we have is in recognition of the thirtieth Annual National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day, which is Saturday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Watson.
Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks such as Food for People, the Food Bank for Humboldt County, and its partner pantries in individual local communities. And whereas since nineteen ninety-three, the Letter Carrier Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive has collected more than one point seven five billion pounds of food nationwide and in two thousand nineteen, brought in more than seventy-five point seven million pounds of food in more than ten thousand cities in all fifty states. And whereas more than thirty-eight million people live in hunger every day in America, including more than twelve million children. And whereas Humboldt County letter carriers collected more than forty-eight thousand pounds of food from local community members in two thousand nineteen, providing critical food resources for Food for People's countywide network of seventeen food pantries, serving more than sixteen thousand Humboldt County residents of all ages. And whereas the rising cost of living, including gasoline, housing, utilities, and medical care, is having a serious impact on low-income children, seniors, and families, particularly those living on fixed incomes. And whereas, excuse me, whereas we recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities and we appreciate community members' support of the food drive. All of the food collected in each community stays in that community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby designates Saturday, May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day and asks all residents to support the food drive by leaving a non-perishable food donation next to their mailbox for their letter carrier to pick up on the second Saturday in May, dated today, May fourth, two thousand twenty-two, signed by our mayor Stacy Atkins Salazar.
Thank you. And I believe we have Allison Kenny and Carl Catano, um, on Zoom. And if either one of you would like to say anything, you could raise your hand and give you that time.
Uh, yeah, we have Allison. Uh, can you hear us? Go ahead, Allison. We can.
I just wanted to say that we are so grateful to all of our partners, community members, and especially our hardworking letter carriers. We could not do it without them. Letter carriers work on the front lines in our communities and get to know the people on their routes. They often see firsthand the struggle of low-income families and seniors. Their compassion and generosity makes a big difference to the people that we serve. In Humboldt County, more than one million pounds have been collected since nineteen ninety-five through the Letter Carrier's Food Drive. More than forty-eight thousand pounds were collected last Letter Carrier's Food Drive in twenty nineteen. This is the largest single-day countywide food drive of the year. And timing of this food drive is critical. As pandemic assistance programs come to an end and food costs are on the rise, many people are having a tough time putting food on the table. More than half of children in Humboldt County are eligible for free or reduced-cost school meals and twenty-one percent of our county's children live at or below the federal poverty level. This translates into a higher demand for our services during the summer month when children are out of school. Food for People serves roughly sixteen thousand people per month through our eighteen different countywide programs for community members of all ages and walks of life. More than fifty percent of those we serve are children and seniors. We have seventeen food pantries throughout the county and in the last fiscal year, we distributed nearly two million pounds of food to our friends and neighbors in need. The most needed foods are protein items like canned soups and stews, canned meat, nut butters, canned fruit and fruit juice, and canned vegetables. We also need volunteers for the food drive. More than seventy-five volunteers typically donate their time unloading mail trucks and sorting and boxing donations. And finally, to cut down on waste, we will be reusing bags from twenty twenty that went unused due to the event cancellation caused by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. So the bag date may look off, but the food drive is on for Saturday, May fourteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Okay, so, um, next we have a proclamation and recognition of National Nurses Week, which is May sixth through the twelfth of two thousand twenty-two. And, um, that'll be read by Vice Mayor Schaefer. Immediately following that, um, I'll be reading the proclamation and recognition of National Hospital Week, which is May eighth through the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. And since we have, um, both Jason Orlandi and David Neal here in person to collect both of those, we'll, we'll each read them and then we'll come down and hand them to you and then you can go ahead and speak if you'd like. Okay, so proclamation and recognition of National Nurses Week, May sixth through twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas one of America's greatest national assets is its nurses and the human resources they devote towards a healthy, humane society. And whereas each year, thousands of nurses contribute to the health and well-being of their communities. And whereas nurses give patients their time, energy, and ability, providing highly skilled, safe, quality care. And whereas it has long been a tradition of our community for nurses to perform work of the highest quality and to care for the health of others. Now therefore be it proclaimed that by the City Council of the City of Arcata, that the week of May sixth through twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, is National Nurses Week. The council encourages all residents to acknowledge the important work done by nurses at Mad River Community Hospital, caring for the community, and to thank them for their dedicated, selfless, and compassionate efforts, dated May fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and signed by Stacy Atkins Salazar. And this is an especially, I don't know, I always have a story to say about it, special one for me to read, but I just want to thank my mom, who's a nurse, who has been a nurse in Arcata, both at Mad River and now, um, for the Humboldt County Office of Education for over forty years. Yes, I said forty. So, thank you to all of our nurses and all the hard work that they do. All right, so this is in recognition of National Hospital Week, May eighth through the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the American Hospital Association celebrates May eighth through the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-two as National Hospital Week with the theme, "We Are Healthcare." And whereas this national healthcare event unites hospitals, healthcare workers, and communities from coast to coast, building enthusiasm and pride in the giving nature of care. And whereas nearly five thousand American hospitals and over five point five million dedicated staff members serve as beacons of hope in their communities. And whereas hospitals today are multi-dimensional facilities encompassing every area of specialization with a focus on wellness and a reach that extends into the communities they serve. And whereas this commemorative celebration demonstrates that hospitals are foundations of the communities that built and nurture them. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Arcata that May eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, is National Hospital Week in Arcata. The council recognizes the dedication and contributions of the doctors, nurses, technicians, and staff of Mad River Community Hospital and urges all residents to express their appreciation for the people, facilities, and technologies that make the miracle of healthcare possible in our community. It's dated May fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and signed by myself, Stacy Atkins Salazar.
Wanted to also mention that this is the fiftieth anniversary of Mad River this year in Arcata. We're proud to be part of the Arcata community and, um, really excited to celebrate that fifty years as a hospital here in Arcata.
Happy anniversary.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I just wanted to say I'm honored and proud to accept this proclamation on behalf of all my fellow nurses at Mad River Hospital. Um, we have been through a long couple of years like everybody else has. Um, we continue to show up every day and help take care of our community members out of a labor of love. Um, I think I speak on behalf of most of my nursing friends that we are not in this to be recognized as heroes. Um, we're here to help take care of everybody on your happiest day when your kids are born, um, in emergencies and in your home, at the hospital. Um, it's just something we do. And thank you again, appreciate it.
Thank you. And next we have a proclamation recognizing May two thousand twenty-two as National Historic Preservation Month. And this proclamation will be read by Councilmember Matthews and will be received by Jeanette Cooper and Bill Chino.
Proclamation recognizing May two thousand twenty-two as National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas National Historic Preservation Month is sponsored by the National Trust to celebrate historic preservation throughout our nation and is celebrated by the City's Historic Landmarks Committee and the Historical Sites Society of Arcata. And whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods and buildings, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas the Historic Landmarks Committee will celebrate Preservation Month by focusing on the National Trust's theme of "This Place Matters", featuring places, infrastructure, and buildings, as well as natural landscapes around Humboldt Bay with a particular emphasis on the plaza. And whereas the Historical Sites Society of Arcata preserves the Phillips House Museum and maintains a website featuring walking tours, preservation articles and archives, which is used by the local schools to discuss the evolution of the community. And whereas the City of Arcata's Historic Landmarks Committee continues to work on fostering education and incentivizing strategies, including its Mills Act program to help property owners rehabilitate and maintain their historic properties. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of Arcata hereby recognizes May two thousand twenty-two as National Historic Preservation Month and calls upon the people of Arcata to recognize and observe National Historic Preservation Month by walking the Arcata Plaza and Arcata's historic neighborhoods, accessing historical information through QR codes located on posters in historical location, visiting the Historic Sites Society of Arcata website, um, following @ArcataHistory on Instagram, and following the Historical Sites Society of Arcata Facebook page containing then and now photographs and feature articles in the Mad River Union on May fourth, two thousand twenty-two, signed by Stacy Atkins Salazar, Mayor.
Hi, my name is Dr. Jeanette Cooper and I'm on the board of the Historical Sites Society of Arcata. And I accept this proclamation on behalf of the Historical Sites Society of Arcata. The society was established in nineteen seventy-two to promote recognition of the cultural heritage of Arcata. We aim to identify and encourage the preservation of historically and architecturally significant structures in our city. Identification and preservation are essential for understanding and appreciating where we come from. These actions not only have an impact on local culture, but they also have an impact on our economy. It's not only the beautiful environmental setting of which our city sits that attracts people, attracts tourists and students and newcomers. But it's also the beauty of our city's architectural gems. Our efforts directed at identification and preservation can be very interactive. Our efforts directed at identification and preservation can be very interactive. We interact with the university, particularly by taking on interns and giving them experience with things like installing museum exhibits or primary source research, local history instruction, or information on architectural knowledge. And we even give them opportunities to publish in our newsletter. We interact with our visitors. We do this via their visits to the Phillips House Museum, and we offer services such as the advice that we've given and the tours that we've yet to give, the Family Nature Summit, which is due to visit our city in July. We interact with our residents by offering interpretation and guidance and resources by our website, such as the guides that we offer for architectural tours that people can take independently. These interactions bring awareness, support, joy, and prosperity to our city. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, thank you for the proclamation. My name is Bill Chino. I'm the managing partner of Jacoby Storehouse. And I'd like to take this timely opportunity to announce that yesterday we submitted for the Mills Act, which will help us preserve the historic Jacoby Storehouse. We look forward to the process, which I am unfamiliar with, but hopefully it'll go smoothly. And we look forward to gaining the council's support and the preservation of the Jacoby Storehouse. It's a state landmark. It's also on the Historical Register. Our initial approach to the project is going to be to, let's call it increased curb appeal or street appeal. We're looking at treating the mortar, the brick and mortar that's on the northeast portion of the building, dealing with old windows, old trim, ledges that need some attention, and then a five paint color full restoration of the storehouse. I think it's going to be wonderful. I consider it the cornerstone of the plaza, and I look forward to this project, and I look forward to working with the city. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you both. And for those, if any of you are still here that accepted proclamations, you're free to stay for the meeting, or you're also very free to leave if you'd rather, so whatever you choose. Next, we have early oral communications, and this fifteen-minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes. So if you are wanting to speak and you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Okay, so it doesn't look like we have any speakers on Zoom for early oral communications. If there's anyone present who would like to speak on something not on the agenda, you can go ahead and make your way, yeah, just go ahead and make your way up to the podium. And if there's others, you can just kind of line up along the wall, and yeah, so come on up.
Hi, good evening. I'm Marion Amber, and I live on Highland Street in Bayside. And I'm here to suggest that perhaps the vacation rental situation in town should be considered a little bit more deeply. At the moment in Highland, we have one, I guess it's an Airbnb. It's pretty much up towards the top of the hill. And the situation now is that there are three contiguous properties down at the bottom of the hill across from Jacoby Creek School and Cafe. And they are, it's suggested that they are going to be set up as Airbnbs. I understand that one of them already is an Airbnb. That would make four Airbnbs within a block. And I'm quite sure that that hasn't been considered here yet. And I'm not against Airbnbs. It's a business. People need to do it, rent or that. But it's going to change the character of the block, although it is down at the bottom where there is business already anyway. However, the street is going to be resurfaced. There's going to be a lot of activity down there. There already is with the schoolchildren. And it's a bit of a chaotic corner to begin with. Dangerous, actually. So I would just like you to perhaps consider, I don't know whether the person who, I don't know details. I don't know if the person who owns the property has already gotten what is called a permit to have a B and B. I don't know if a permit covers, I don't know how many buildings a permit covers. I, what else don't I know? I know that, you know, I'm thinking, what this makes me, is that, is it timeout?
It is actually your two minutes.
Okay, so I guess that's, I guess I'm asking you to study the subject and perhaps to hold off on giving more permits until, you know, this is, you kind of have a better handle on what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you for your public input. Is there anyone else that wants to speak about something that's not on the agenda?
Members and staff, James Becker. And I just wanted to comment on one thing that seems to be in the air the last couple of weeks, or more specifically this week. Recent groups wishing to co-opt the community input process claim the greater Arcata community would prefer building heights in the Gateway Update stories. Since the release of the draft back in December, numerous community members in public forums and emails have expressed their desire for buildings no taller than four stories, you know, and concerns about larger ones. So after months of reviewing numerous aspects of this plan, I'm taking my two minutes to reiterate to the council that there are many voices in this conversation. And by carrying out meaningful engagements followed by proper planning, buildings can be properly sited in neighborhoods and hopefully enhance Arcata as a whole. And I'm looking forward to more meaningful conversations about it. Thank you.
Thank you, James. So next we have the consent calendar, and all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public or staff can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. We have item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Item B, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. C, a bi-weekly report on general warrants. D, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. E, award a contract in the amount of two million nine hundred and ten thousand six hundred and twelve dollars to Corolla Engineers Incorporated for the construction management and inspection services for Phase One of the Arcata wastewater treatment facility's upgrade project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. F is to adopt resolution number two one two dash five eight, accepting a public trail easement from Eureka Ready Mix consisting of a portion of assessors parcel number five zero seven dash one three one dash zero nine one adjacent to Carlson Park. G, award a three-year professional services agreement for housing loan program portfolio management not to exceed ten thousand dollars annually to Community Reinvestment Fund USA, CRF. Authorize staff to work with CRF to finalize the agreement and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents. And H, adopt resolution number two one two dash six five, a resolution approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto from the two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two funding year of the state's CDBG program. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'd like to remove items D, E, F, and H.
Do we have, is anyone, any staff member wanting to remove anything?
Nope, and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so someone would like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent, to approve items A, B, C, and G of the consent calendar.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. So item D.
Yeah, did we update the language on this?
We did. This would be the second version that's been updated, I believe. Yeah, and I think the change in the language is in finding number two, that the state of emergency could continue to directly impact the ability of council and the public to meet safety safely. And the intent of that was to give the council continued flexibility as, you know, the pandemic ebbs and flows.
Great. No, I think that addresses my concerns when we had the last discussion about it, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. That was my only question.
I move that we accept consent calendar, item D. I second.
And do we have any public input on this matter?
None on Zoom?
Okay, so there was a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item E.
Yeah, I was just curious, how does this qualify for a CDBG grant?
You want H? Which one are you on?
Am I reading the wrong one? E?
Yeah, E is for wastewater treatment.
Upgrade?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. It says in the introduction, two point four million will be funded via the community development block grant.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's right. So this contract is not through CDBG that we are asking right now. The construction portion of the project is funded by CDBG, which will be paying for the UV disinfection for the project. UV stands for ultraviolet disinfection system.
Yeah, I was just wondering how it qualifies for the program.
We received a grant.
David, can, hold on just a second. Let me make sure. David, hold on. Okay, go ahead, David.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Watson, we received a twenty seventeen CDBG grant for the UV disinfectant system. And that's currently pending the construction contracts and purchase contracts to use those CDBG funds for that project. The, if you wanted to dig into more detail, I can.
No, that's good. No, I think you answered. Thank you very much.
Yep.
What does it mean? Let me see. It says that the city is on track for SRF funding. What does that mean that we're on track?
On track means we've been working with State Water Board for funding for this project since two thousand sixteen, and we've been meeting with them every month. So when I say, when we say we're on track is we are in next few months, we'll be able to execute a contract for the funding agreement. So that's what we're saying on track. So we will be having a contract with them in coming months for the project.
And how much money are we getting from that fund? All of it?
Portion of it, as said in the staff report, is through CDBG. Some is from our wastewater fund. And the remainder portion, which is the most, I would say, more than thirty to forty million dollars, would be through SRF funding, which could be in the form of a grant or could be in the form of a loan, low interest loan.
So do we, I mean, they already told us that we're going to get the grant, or we still have to apply for it and all that?
We applied for that in two thousand sixteen, so we've been working with them. Verbally, they have said we are qualified to get the grant and the loan, but we have not executed the contract yet with them.
Okay, thank you.
When the council first reviewed this, we were applying for a loan. At that time, that was the only monies that were available. We are trying not to be too optimistically hopeful, but as everyone knows, there's a lot of money that's been coming down through for infrastructure as a result of the pandemic. So we are working with them to see if there are any of those buckets of money that some of what originally was going to be a loan could be actually converted into a grant, which would be a substantial boost for the project.
It talked a little bit about chemical treatment. I was just wondering what chemicals we use to treat the wastewater. I know chlorine was one, or do we use other stuff?
Yes, currently we use chlorine for disinfecting our wastewater, so we'll be slowly getting rid of that, and we will be replacing that with UV disinfectant system.
I had a tour scheduled for the wastewater treatment facility, and it was canceled. I was just wondering why it was canceled.
It was canceled based on the current protocols that are in place, and as soon as we can, we will reschedule that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, it's just interesting because the staff reached out to me to schedule it, so it just seems like it would have been thought about before that. Are we on track with the time schedule for this project?
I would say currently, yes. We are very optimistic, and we are planning to bid the project in coming weeks. There are some hurdles in some sense. We need to get a last piece of, for the project is a coastal development permit, which we believe we are on track. We are in communication with our coastal staff, so we are hoping we'll have that before the award of the construction. But I would say, yes, we are on track with the project at this point.
Thanks.
If there are no further questions, I'll make.
No questions.
Okay, well, you turned your mic off. Sorry.
I was looking at the scope of work, and it said that there were minor changes made to the city's language, and I was wondering what those minor changes were.
Believe they are related to contract, and I do not have that information right now, those changes. I think that was in communication with our contract specialist and their contract specialist on that element of work.
What's a contractor selection assistance?
Contractor selection assistance, I would say if we hire a Corolla team to help us with the construction management. So during the bidding process, when we go through the bidding process, we will have multiple contractors applying for the job or giving us the bids. So they will help us reviewing the bids, looking at their qualification, and assisting city to make the right decision to award the contract for the construction work.
Thank you. Who's the city's project manager?
Currently, we have two projects, multiple, depending on what work we are doing. But moving forward, we just had a new position that will be assisting as a project manager. Jessica Hewitt, she just will be starting as a position as a project manager for the project.
Will you please repeat that?
What's that?
Will you please repeat that? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. I will repeat. So currently we have multiple people working on the project, so everybody's handling different portions of the work. But moving forward, as we move to the construction, we have a point contact for the project management. And we will be, and her name is Jessica Hewitt. She works for our division, and she'll be the project manager moving forward for the project.
Okay, thank you. Looking at this letter from Corolla, it says the estimate should be considered preliminary. I was wondering what that means, so the price could go up?
Currently, when they submitted the estimate, yes, that was preliminary, but we had an interview with them. So these numbers are the concrete numbers. So if we award the contract, so we will be moving forward with the numbers. It's in your staff report, and they presented.
Great, thank you so much. I'll move to approve item E.
Second. Do you have any members of the public wanting to comment on item E? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I just want to say I really enjoyed that tour. Thank you so much. It was eye-opening, really educational. I learned a lot. And I just want to say, I really enjoyed that tour. Thank you so much. It was eye-opening, really educational. I learned a lot. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item F.
You know, I just wanted to say you did a great job at the staff report. That's it. I don't have any questions. Thank you so much. I'll make a motion to approve item F.
Second.
Do we have any public input?
Yes, we have one public. Oh, no, we do not have public input. Okay. The hand down.
All in favor?
Aye.
And item H?
What does any amendments thereto mean?
Did you hear the question, David?
Yeah, thank you for that. The amendments thereto means if the contract is amended. So, from time to time, you know, contracts are extended or, you know, minor changes occur based on, you know, programmatic requirements. And so, this authorizes those minor amendments to that contract.
Who's the contract with again?
The state, the Housing and Community Development, or the city to access its local program income funds to fund the project, the Danko Communities Project that was awarded in January, or approved in January by the city council and awarded in April by the state.
It's a contract between the city and the state?
That's correct, yeah. It's a standard agreement that allows the city to access its CDBG funds for the purpose of the Home Key Project.
So, then the council would never see the amendments?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, you know, that's pretty much my problem with it. I feel like there's this trend where we keep delegating decision-making power to the staff. You know, I've just been a long proponent of maintaining that at the council level. You know, it's what we were elected to do, and that's how I feel about it. Thanks.
Okay. Well, I will also acknowledge that the state has required the form of this resolution be exactly what it is. They won't let us make any amendments, and if we were to amend the resolution, they would not approve the application.
So, they said as to say thereto?
That's correct.
They're saying that the council can't approve stuff?
The form of the resolution was prescribed by the state. It's the same for every jurisdiction that enters into CDBG agreements under the current NOFA. And we do not have the authority or the ability to amend it if we wish to use CDBG funds. That's correct.
Would you please send me that information so I can check it out?
NOFA?
I just want to see in writing, you know, that we have to have the contract this way, the resolution this way.
Sure, be happy to.
Thank you.
We do have one public comment for this item when you're ready.
Is that the end of your questions? Okay, well, go ahead and take that public comment.
All right, call in user one. Go ahead.
Hi, yeah. Please forgive me if my comment is a little out of rhythm. I'm just using this instance from the first time. My comment and question is, it seems that there is limited amount of public input, and I'm wondering what you guys are planning on doing to get more opinions of Arcata residents involved? And then also, we hear you going about this pretty quickly, and there's this thing that was just said about the state saying that we can't change the contract once we go into it. So, is there a way that we can pull the break? Because I think there are a lot of people who are very shocked with this plan that you guys are putting through.
All right, thank you.
That's my comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Do we have anyone else wanting to comment?
Nobody else on Zoom?
Yeah, I'll just say I agree with the speaker. That's why I originally voted no on it. I felt like we needed a much more robust public process.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item H from the consent calendar and say that I'm really excited that we are granted these state funds to be able to bring essential housing to our area. And I thought we had a pretty robust discussion about it back in December about this topic. So, I want to make a motion to approve item H.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, motion passes. That moves us into old business, and so we have a public hearing to approve the annual engineer's report and declare the city's intention to continue to levy and collect assessments of existing assessment districts to include the Mad River Parkway Business Center, Windsong, and James Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts. Can we please have a staff report from city engineer Natrakatri?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, members of staff, and the member of the public. This item is a continuation from April 6 meeting, this engineer's report, and was brought to your attention at that meeting. And this is one of the annual items that we bring to the council for approval just before the budget, so that we can, this could be incorporated in the budget approval process. Currently, we have three assessment districts, or active assessment districts in the city of Arcata. I'll just name them. Windsong Subdivision Landscape Maintenance District, which was established in 1995. James Creek Meadow Subdivision Maintenance Assessment District, which was established in 2003, and the most recent one, Mad River Parkway Business Center Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, which was established in 2013. City staff provides maintenance services at these districts. The revenue for the services comes from the tax assessment. The tax assessment value for each parcel was established when the assessment districts were created at that time. Currently, in those, out of the three, two of the district don't have a CPI, so they have the fixed value. Those are James Creek Meadow and the Windsong. Only the Mad River Parkway has a CPI, so the value for each parcel varies every year. The purpose of doing the engineer's report annually is to make sure that we are not overcharging each parcel when we are doing the assessment. So, every year, we do this, and this year also we did, and we compare how much money we have spent by tracking the staff time that do the work in those districts. Based on that, we have not exceeded, or in fact, we are charging them less than what we should be charging. So, we are doing more work than we are getting paid for. So, hence, I'm saying, hence, we are recommending to approve the engineer's report and continue to levy this district.
Do we have any questions from council?
No, that was a great report. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment?
There's no public comment on Zoom.
I'll make a motion to approve new business item A.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take a quick five-minute recess, and then we will be back. So, we'll be back at about 7:50. Thank you. Welcome back to our regularly scheduled city council meeting. We just have to go back real quick and cross our Ts and dot our Is. We need to redo the motion for old business, item A.
Okay, so I'll move that we approve the annual engineer's report, declare the city's intention to continue to levy and collect assessments of existing assessment districts, and adopt the Mad River Parkway Business Center Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Resolution Number 212-47, the James Creek Meadow Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Resolution Number 212-46, and the Windsong Landscape Maintenance Assessment District Resolution Number 212-48.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, now we are in new business. So, our first item, A, is to appoint up to two new members to the Parks and Recreation Committee for terms expiring March 31, 2023, or 2025. So, do we have any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I was really impressed by both of these candidates. They both had really great answers and seemed very invested in parks and the community. So, if we have no public comment, I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Arkell III and Bonnie McAvoy for both for terms ending March 31, 2025 on Parks and Recreation Committee.
I'll second.
Okay, do we have any public input on this?
None online.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And I got through all of that without making a Parks and Recreation's comment, so I'm very proud of myself.
Good job, councilmember Matthews, and thank you to those applicants for applying. We appreciate your service. Okay, so we have next in new business, item B, which is to consider amending the city of Arcata's commercial cannabis activity permit regulations. And can we have a staff report from Community Development Director Loya, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to jump in quickly just because we received several pieces of what we call blue folder or correspondence to the council after the time that the agenda was published. And I just wanted to open this item tonight just by clarifying that the consideration before the council tonight is to take our current limit of 15 retail sales establishments that is established in our resolution, and to potentially change that number or reduce that number. The staff recommendation is to reduce that number to 10, which would cap it at the current level of permits that have been issued. So, many, most of those correspondences, at least somewhere along the line, had the impression that we would be raising it potentially. And I just wanted to clarify before we started and got into staff reports that the consideration before the council tonight is whether or not they wanted to reduce that number, although you certainly have the authority to go either way. And then, David, are you opening, or Joe? You're straight into Joe.
Could you, could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, just that the suggestion before the council tonight is to take the current resolution number of 15 allowable retail sales establishments for cannabis and reduce that to 10. I think there was confusion in the community that we had 10, but we were still going to be looking at going to 15, where in fact, we already have authority to issue 15. And the council, the requested item coming from the council member was that we look at reducing that to the current number of permits that we have issued, which is 10. Of those 10, which I don't want to get into Joe's staff report, but six of those are currently operating, I think.
Thank you.
But there are 10 that are issued. Okay, David, am I turning it to Joe?
Yeah, I'm going to let Joe take the first part here.
All right, good evening. Joe Matier, senior planner here at the city of Arcata Community Development Department. Before you this evening is consideration of Resolution 212-64, which would amend the current commercial cannabis activity permit regulations. And staff recommends that the council consider that. It would be adopting the resolution that you'll find on packet page 101. The city utilizes several areas of the municipal code to regulate commercial cannabis activities. The land use code, which requires a use permit in the commercial industrial zoning districts, requires that the planning commission approve those. The planning commission has approved 10 so far. One was a legacy that was done a long time ago that was still active at the Cooper Building. It was part of when it was medicinal cannabis. They approved that. Nobody has operated there. So, even though there's been 10 use permits considered by the planning commission, that one is kind of an outlier at this point. So, I don't mean to add confusion to it, but there's a kind of a number crunching here. Really, what we're looking at is the commercial cannabis activity regulations. We could have the planning commission, if people came in and asked for 20 use permits, we, the planning commission could theoretically issue those. I don't know why anybody would do that, because the cap is really at the commercial cannabis activity permit level. That's what this resolution would consider as setting that at 10 when it was currently 15. The municipal code provides cannabis use regulations. It's kind of broken into the commercial aspect of it, where you have your cultivation, distribution, manufacturing, and the retail sales. So, there's kind of two layers for the retail sales. Planning commission approval of a use permit, and then a commercial cannabis activity permit that is issued through the city manager's office. and then a Commercial Cannabis Activity Permit that is issued through the city manager's office. And in addition, all those Commercial Cannabis Activity Permits does require a permit from the State Department of Cannabis Control. So there's several layers of regulations. The retailers have two tiers that they have to pass through at the local level itself. And then also, the municipal code in the cannabis regulation area does regulate private, non-commercial activities. So the state of California does allow adult use and medicinal use and cultivation in private settings. Resolution 212-64 would update the current resolution of 21206. And again, mainly, it's the Commercial Cannabis Activity Permit Regulations. The only amendment we've made in the resolution would be to the Exhibit A item, I think it's six. Yes, six general requirements of operation. It would be packet page 105, I, 6I. The retailer permit limitations, the number of retail permits issued by the City of Arcata shall be limited to 10. When the City of Arcata was originally looking at this, we kind of were contemplating caps, and we came up with a number of 15. We were looking at it not as a means of... Really, we wanted to encourage the entrepreneurs to think of outside the box. We weren't thinking necessarily it was all going to be the dispensary, straight retail storefront businesses. We included services as a possibility of one of those activities that could be there. We didn't want to box entrepreneurs, businessmen, folks into just this straight retail service. Literally, all the ones have been issued. The city manager is correct. We've issued 10 of those use permits, or 10 use permits so far. Six of them are operational fully. They've obtained the use permit, the Commercial Cannabis Activity Permit, and the state license as well. And they are fully operational. They're in the downtown area, outside... The original ones were the Humboldt Patient Resource Center, which is now the heart of Humboldt, over on Sixth and Seventh and I and J. And then we have one down on Fourth Street. We have some on Fifth Street. There's one in operation out at Valley West. So Valley West is really the only one that's kind of out of the downtown, Northtown area at this point, and then along to Samoa Boulevard. Of those 10 that are issued, six of them are fully operational. Three of them are going through the permit process to obtain the Commercial Cannabis Activity Permit. They're not operational. They're becoming operational. They're going through the process. They're really trying to get the local permit and then submit to the state for the state permit. So those should be operational. I don't know when. You know, it's really up to their timeline on that. But the planning commission has approved those. This item came through a council member's recommendation to consider the cap. Folks consider that, you know, 15 is too many. We realize that. We kind of have, you know, how many pharmacies do we have in Arcata? You know, to serve our community. But we didn't want to really get into the market. We felt that a lot of the stuff would be market-driven, and those that would succeed in private, good service and customer product and good service would survive. And so we kind of took hands-off approach on that. And we did want to kind of set a cap, though, too. We didn't want to be run amok with a lot of these cannabis retailers based on kind of the speculation, and then also maybe displacing current businesses that were in there. This item came through a council recommendation. We have not vetted this with the Economic Development Committee or any other committees or commissions. It hasn't gone to the Planning Commission, so I just want to mention that. I know the city manager already mentioned the confusion with the letters that were received. In fact, those letters, those emails that you received, support this resolution, because they do want that cap. They think that many are within that business operations already and feel that they want to lower that as well. But I think that's it. I know the director maybe has some closing statements, but certainly I'd be happy to answer any questions for you. But staff is recommending that the council consider adopting Resolution 212-64, that would lower the Commercial Cannabis Activity Permits to 10. And yeah, feel free to ask any questions. Pass it over.
So one of the questions that I have that I don't see on this, so maybe it's from somewhere else, is the distance between dispensaries. You know, I feel like, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we do go ahead and pass this, it will be a moot point, correct, since we'll be capped?
I would say that that's an accurate statement. There are provisions within the Land Use Code that require special consideration, that we take into account distances between dispensaries. There's not currently a hard cap as to the distance between dispensaries. And the Planning Commission has weighed those special considerations each time. The only other things that I wanted to kind of finalize with, Joe did mention that we haven't taken this through, you know, various committees or much public engagement. When the item did come up, we put notice out to existing cannabis retailers. But I wanted to put in the perspective, you know, two bits to that perspective. One is that, you know, this is the kind of decision, this is a policy-level decision that doesn't really have a negative impact on any user group. Existing cannabis dispensaries have already been permitted. And to limit additional, you know, permits that aren't currently, you know, under contemplation, doesn't have a negative impact on anyone. And the second thing I wanted to say that would support your decision, if you choose to reduce the number, is that we had set the number at 15, as Joe mentioned, to sort of let the market dictate the appropriate number, but then have an upper boundary on it, so that there wasn't wild speculation. And what we're seeing in the sales tax for this use type is that each new cannabis dispensary does not result in incremental uptick in sales tax. And so I do think that, you know, we probably have some good indications for this concept that we have hit a market threshold. It's not to say that the market couldn't change in the future, but at least based on, you know, current market pressures, I think we're there. So you probably have some pretty sound footing for making this policy decision, despite the fact that we haven't done a whole lot of public outreach at this point.
Sure. So, City Planner Matier, do you have the information on how many of these dispensaries that are permitted are local? And how many are from out of county?
That is not something that we necessarily ask through the discretionary permit process. I know that some of the comments that were made with the email correspondence to the council did direct that. My understanding is that many of them are local, and they do do the local products. We did have one early application that seemed to be more of a formula-type business, but that one, they withdrew their application. But I don't really want to pigeonhole any of those ones into any sort of local, non-local, because they're investing in our community, so.
Thanks. And what criteria does the Planning Commission consider while they're approving these permits?
The use permit is a discretionary permit, and the use permits, they do have findings that they go through. There's like five findings, but within each finding, there's like another five, so there's quite a few findings. And they do have special ones for this type of business activity. You mentioned the distance from residences is 300 feet. Then you have 500 feet. It's a special consideration. It's not a direct prohibition, like some communities have adopted some. But it would be 500 feet from youth centers, daycare, schools, and other dispensaries. So there was that consideration of the concentration. When we adopted those standards, there were two medical cannabis facilities that were on the same property, and we had many years of their operation. And we required them to go through and obtain a use permit, even though they were operational at the time. And we really hadn't seen any negative community impacts from that concentration. So we kind of took that as kind of a standard. But we've always had, even when we had the medicinal cannabis regulations, we've always had that built in, just in case, special considerations. But a use permit, if it's Joe's Laundry Matt, they would have a lot of the same findings. Is it compatible? Does the site support that? Is it compatible with the businesses, existing and future ones as well? I could get more specific, but sorry.
No, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. You've answered my question.
Do you have any other questions from council?
I just wanted to make a quick observation of something I think I learned tonight, just so for... And if I'm wrong, Joe's going to correct me. But so what I'm hearing, though, is that we have 10 use permits by the Planning Commission that have been approved. We have six operational. We have three that are actively working, pretty new approvals by the Planning Commission, and actively working on getting those businesses up and running. We have one who's had a use permit for a long time and no activity to come through on a cannabis activity permit. So one of the things that Senior Planner Matier said was that, you know, not sure why people would keep coming forward and wanting use permits, but they might want to get in line and be ready to have approval process. So I mean, what I'm actually hearing is that if you approved the number nine tonight, you would not likely be affecting anyone who's actively working on a cannabis permit. Or if you approved a number 10 tonight, and there was somebody out there who is really actively working and trying to get everything ready to come to the Planning Commission in the next two months, they could still do that and then actively work on their cannabis activity permit. They would just have to be the first one to finalize everything to get that permit. Does that seem accurate?
Yes, correct.
Well, if that's the case, then I really do want to revisit the distance between dispensaries, because if there's still a permit available... I mean, I know that we're very concentrated in a certain location. Is there, I mean, is there potentially a spot that they... I think we're saturated right now in a certain location. And if there's still one permit available, I would really like to add in some language that, you know, prohibits them from going within a certain amount of feet of an existing location.
So in order to set a new standard for those limitations to distance, that wouldn't be initiating a land use code amendment. And you could certainly do that tonight if you wish to. The resolution could be adopted tonight. It doesn't require Planning Commission review or any other, you know, committee recommendations. And that would establish the permit limitations. And then if you wanted to initiate, you know, code amendment to address that, you know, that separation, we could do that as well.
Yeah, I mean, that would be great. And I do respect all of the committees, and, you know, I understand that we haven't brought this before them. But I would be happy to run that land use code to more of a public engagement process and go through a committee. But so, yeah.
Yeah, and I would add, I definitely, I'm pretty of a similar mind of Councilmember Matthews right now, just that I do feel comfortable with lowering this cap. I've talked to quite a few local dispensary owners who, you know, have felt that this market is oversaturated. We really don't want to see our legacy cannabis businesses that have existed in Arcata, you know, lose their, for, you know, not be as profitable for the city as they once were, and not be able to make their livelihood and living. And so I would feel, you know, comfortable approving this tonight. But I would like to see, yeah, something come back about the land use code that, you know, would maybe be of a similar spirit to our formula restaurant kind of ordinance that does define them to certain areas. Because, you know, if somebody wanted to open up another dispensary in a different part of Valley West, away from that shopping center, or in the Westwood Shopping Center, or somewhere that is a little bit different from our core downtown area, I definitely would feel a lot more comfortable than that than seeing, you know, another dispensary pop up a block away from the plaza yet again. And so, you know, it would be, I think, as we see this evolve, and we've seen, you know, after legalization and what the cannabis market looks like, and what, you know, saturation of a market looks like in a town, evolve a little bit more to be able to kind of look at the different areas of our city and say, you know, even in Northtown, you know, we don't have any dispensaries in farther Northtown than basically where, if you want to consider Pacific Paradise north of North Town, I don't, you know, I guess north of the plaza. But, you know, it's kind of, yeah, really delegated to one area. To, so to be able to see a land use code that would, you know, kind of limit those areas a little bit more would be a lot more interesting and probably better for the city, but also definitely, yeah, would require a lot more public input, Planning Commission input. But, you know, to sum it up, I'd feel comfortable approving this tonight, and then maybe moving forward down the line with something like that.
Just a comment on the process. It just seems kind of backwards that we created a resolution and then brought it to the council and asked if it was something they wanted to do. I mean, I think typically, you know, what should happen is that it comes to the council for a discussion, and then the council decides if that's something they want to allocate staff time to. So yeah, that was my feeling on that. And, you know, I don't think we really need to send it to a committee. You know, I think we should stop wasting people's time. I think, you know, this is something I talked to David about, exactly this, probably over a year ago. So I'm glad to see people are finally getting on board with it. And, you know, I say we just stop wasting people's time and move it through tonight.
Quick question. I mean, this is the resolution that's already on the books and exists that was proved by a much, like, years ago, right? And we've only changed the language under item 6I, correct? That's the only change to a previous resolution that exists?
That is the only change. And this particular number was pulled out of the full ordinance for just this reason, to allow a nimbleness of a future council to be able to change that number up or down.
Great.
And I would, I mean, I would offer, it might not stand, so Nancy and David can't kick me because they're on Zoom. But you could, at least tonight, on letter I, if you wanted to, just write, "The number of retailer permits issued by the City of Arcata shall be limited to 10 and shall maintain a minimum distance of 500 feet between them." I will have to research and see if that would hold. But, and if it doesn't, then we will come back with a larger process. But if that is something that you wanted to, as a placeholder, to see if we could hold tonight, we could do that.
Thank you.
Nancy is... Jumping out. Nope, she's okay. Okay.
Okay, so just to sum up, then, to kind of respond to what Councilmember Watson said. I mean, this was not a resolution just brought by staff. It was requested by, I think, multiple council members and brought back from an existing resolution that already exists that was edited to reflect the request of council members, correct?
Correct.
Thanks for clarifying that, Sarah. It's really helpful.
And just to weigh in with my thoughts, I think I would feel comfortable, you know, making the change in the resolution and then leaving the rest to go through the process of the Planning Commission. Are there any last-minute questions or comments before we open it up for public comment? Okay, let's go ahead and see if we've got anyone online that would like to speak.
All right, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, go ahead and raise your hand if you are on Zoom now. Our first public comment is call-in user one. Go ahead, call-in user one. You had it, but then it muted again. Go ahead and unmute again. There. That should be good. Call-in user one, go ahead. Okay, go ahead. Call-in user one, can you hear us?
Sorry.
There you go. There you go. Okay, good. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. I'm curious if you guys would be able to give local dispensary applicant priority over out-of-town people?
Okay, thank you for that question. We'll see if we can possibly get that answered. That does seem like, that is a relevant question. I believe we cannot give priority to local people versus out-of-town, correct?
That is correct, yeah. It has to be a discretionary process that then goes through, consistent for everyone.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that.
All right, that's all for Zoom public comment. There might be some in the room tonight.
Do we have anyone that's in the room that would like to make public comment?
Thank you for... Is that better? Jennifer Hansen with Pacific Paradise. I had a whole speech for tonight, and I didn't need it. Joe, thank you for your support, being back here in 2018 and knowing what you were saying about thinking out of the box and hoping we would have some really creative ideas, and hoping that they would be placed all over the city. thinking out of the box and hoping we would have some really creative ideas and hoping that they would be placed all over the city to support the entire community. Um, it was just with these other four coming in and getting so close together. I just don't think any future businesses would really want to be in those areas. They do all want to be downtown. That just makes sense. I want to thank you for hearing us, for seeing us and supporting us. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Roy Gomez. I'm lifelong resident of Humboldt County. In 2018, Eureka, um, started their whole ordinance process and they, uh, required it be through an RFP. We submitted through Heart of the Emerald, our dispensary, um, we submitted our RFP and were, was awarded, um, in the top four. And at that time, they were going, uh, the ordinance was written to open up two and then every six months they'd open up another two. And I forgot what the cap was, but there was a cap, um, originally. And after they awarded the top four, a few months went by and the economic director at the time, Rob Humlin, actually came to the winners, uh, to ask how they're, how they would feel if the City of Eureka took the cap away and eventually would take the RFP process away was, which, you know, was pretty daunting and, you know, more of a, a task than it is now. And at the time, I really, uh, felt that, and I still do for Eureka, that, uh, that there should be no cap and there should be no radi- uh, radius, which there's no radius clause. Mainly because the City of Eureka is full of for lease signs all up and down the 101. And the more businesses and cannabis money that could be brought to the community, um, and to the City of Eureka, the better for the whole of Eureka and people driving through, not seeing as many for lease signs and let the market dictate. And that was kind of my stance and still is for the City of Eureka. Fast forward to last year, we opened up Heart of the Emerald, by the way, we've been in business for, um, almost two years now. And, um, um, we applied last year with the City of Arcata, um, after securing a, um, a place in North Town, the old recycled youth building. And, um, we went through the process and I believe we were the eighth ones that got through the planning. So we're in the, in the top 10, I guess you could say. And I do feel that Arcade is a different scenario. I do feel that Arcade is not off the, it's not off the beaten path. I mean, excuse me, it is off the beaten path. It's not, 101's not driving straight through it. There's not a ton of for lease signs in the City of Arcata. And I do feel that, um, you know, that, that businesses to a certain extent after, um, after the 10 could be cannibalized. So I do agree with, with the cap in this scenario, but I wouldn't in others. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Mary Ellen Jerkovich and I am from the Humboldt Patient Research Center. We have been in operation for 20 years. I didn't know about any of this until I heard it on Facebook today. So I know that we are supposed to be contacted. I was not contacted. So I think a cap is great. It should have been way less before this. I think that we were told when we got our permit that if either myself or Humboldt, um, um, HOH would be going out of business, they would not replace us. Because the 15 cap was to put them all over, all over, not in a designated area. We have like four in our little 500 square foot area. That was not what we were told. That was not what was happening at that time. But we've had a lot of different people come in, as you are, and we are now told that we're gonna do at 10. So please do 10. You know, we would like to have it been less and that didn't happen. And we're, we're congregating them in one area and that's not a good thing. And we're all like buying the same product. We have to get it through distribution. We're all selling the same thing. It's, we're just selling the same thing really lowly priced. So I say 10 because that's what you're gonna do because you've already approved that. And please do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, unless there's any more discussion, we can have a motion.
I would like to make a motion to amend the City of Arcata's commercial cannabis activity permit regulations. To, uh, the number of retail permits issued by the City of Arcata be limited to 10. And I'd also like to direct the staff to look into land use code change.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Right, motion passes. Thank you. Um, next we have adopt resolution number 212-62 approving the 2021 general plan annual progress report. Could we have a staff report from Community Development Director Loya, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and, uh, council members. I'll make my presentation very short, um, just, and then leave it to any questions you may have. Uh, but the assignment before you tonight is to, uh, approve a general plan, uh, annual performance report, uh, which became, uh, required by the state a couple of years ago. So this is, I think, our, our second, uh, annual performance report that was required under this, uh, this new change. The state doesn't really dictate any format or, you know, content, um, and really left it up to the jurisdictions to uh, put into the report what they felt was important. We've developed this, uh, format and our last, uh, last APR was, uh, the exact same format. And so it really just reports out on some of the major programs that are going on and the progress we've made in, uh, the fiscal year. So if you have any, uh, questions about the content, be happy to, to address those. I, I do know that there are a couple of, um, you know, minor typos that need to be fixed in there uh, that were brought to our attention. And so we can, we can touch base on those two if necessary. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
David, would you just give us a quick overview, um, because on here it touched on our, you know, how we're meeting our housing element numbers and everything like that. So could you just give a quick, um, overview for us and for the public, just kind of what, what categories of housing we are looking to, to need and how we are meeting, um, those numbers in the current housing cycle?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, that's, that's a really good question. The housing element is obviously something that's, uh, you know, relevant to a lot of the long range planning work we're doing right now as well. Um, and there've been several questions about, well, you know, what does the housing element mean and so on and so forth. So just starting super high level, uh, the housing element is one of the required elements of general plans. Um, and not only is it required, but it's required to be updated periodically. Humboldt County is on an eight year cycle. Uh, communities that don't do well at meeting their, uh, regional housing needs allocation and, and their adoption of their housing elements are put on a five year cycle to make sure that the state has a little bit finer control over those jurisdictions. And so we, we moved to an eight year cycle, uh, in this current eight cycle planning period. The housing element planning period extends from 2019. Um, our, uh, housing element was adopted in December of 2019 and it runs through 2027. And so that's the, the planning period. And within that planning period, uh, the city is required to, uh, take actions to, uh, provide for the development of what the state distributes to the jurisdiction as the regional housing needs allocation. That's the total number of housing units that needs to be available for development within the City of Arcata, uh, over that planning period. Now, in, um, I'm gonna take a little side tangent and relate this to, uh, other housing element law that's been adopted recently. Uh, just to make the, the point as to how important it is for us to make these commitments. So in 2017, 2018, the state floated a raft of housing element bills, um, some of which, uh, result in, uh, the city losing local control over, uh, approval of housing developments if we're not meeting our regional housing needs allocation, uh, for that period. And there are certain thresholds. So when, by the time you're halfway through, in our case, you know, four years into the, um, housing element cycle, if you haven't met half of your, uh, your goal, then, then some of those start to trigger in. The City of Arcata in the last three housing element cycles has done pretty well. We've met about 70% of our poll uh, overall in total count. Uh, but where we typically find that we're, uh, doing, uh, majority of those units is in the very low and low income. Uh, and then the second best category that we, uh, tend to hit is the, the moderate income category. Uh, there is a table in the housing element section, um, and we've kind of updated that table based on some of the, uh, the new projects that have been approved. The Days Inn and Red Roof projects, for example, a couple of other projects that we know are coming in. And so I'm gonna give you sort of an updated, uh, version of that table based on what we know is coming in. Uh, but you'll see in that table, within the very low income category, the total number of units that were required to produce are 142. The low income units are 95. Moderate income units are 111 and above moderate 262 for a total of 610 units. We'll go into this in a lot more detail over the coming months as we're working through the, um, you know, the long range planning work that we're doing, the general plan updates and the, the gateway area plan and whatnot. But when we did the housing element, uh, in 2019, early 2020, uh, we found through our, our inventory process that we had about 200 and, um, let's say 250. It was fewer than 250 units available uh, through the land that was currently zoned, uh, for residential uses. And so of the 610 units we were required, we had credit towards 210, 250, something like that. I have the number off the top of my head. So one of the things that came out of the housing element was the requirement to identify areas where we were committing to upzone and create more uh, land where housing could be built. And so that generated, uh, four opportunity zones. One was, uh, focused on where the gateway area plan, uh, is being proposed. One was centered on the downtown and, uh, surrounding, uh, areas there. Uh, one was in the St. Louis Road area and one was in the Valley West. And so those were commitments that we made, uh, over this, uh, housing element cycle through 2028 to go and do, you know, targeted upzones. Okay, so now switching back to how we're doing, um, you'll see in the report that, um, the, you know, 2019 through 2021, uh, progress that we have identified, um, you know, brings us to a certain point. But then in 2022, we also are going to be able to report, uh, we know of now, a total of 138, uh, deed restricted, very low income units. And so we will have met that category and exceeded it, uh, to the amount of 156%. Um, we also know that we've got a couple of low income units coming in and so we'll be at about 13% after this year based on what we know now of meeting that goal. It's not quite, um, you know, performing on the low income. Um, in terms of moderate income units, uh, we know of about 100 that are coming in in Westwood. It's a pending permit. And so we're counting those towards the moderate income category and we'll admit that slightly exceeded it 109%. Uh, but our above moderate category, um, you know, where we're required to produce 262 units. We've only produced, uh, you know, approximately 30 to date and we see about seven more coming in 2022. So a, a little underperforming in, in the low income category and the above moderate category is, uh, targeting about 13, 15% respectively. Coming up on, uh, you know, almost, uh, three years in now to this eight year cycle.
Great. Thank you, David. You kind of led into my next question. Um, and I was able to have a bit of a conversation about this with City Manager Deemer, but I wanted to hear, I guess, your viewpoint. And you kind of alluded to a couple, you know, the, the gateway and some other projects that we do have up and coming, but yeah, that, that number in that above moderate, um, you know, range is, is quite stark. I mean, so do you, what are, what are your ideas or what do you see as, you know, areas of growth within that category? Um, maybe just slightly more specifically, but ma- maybe the, the slider short version, but, um, you know, of where we can grow in that area or what opportunities we might have, um, to meet that above moderate area?
Yeah, well, in, in brief, I mean, there's a couple of things that are happening there. Uh, number one, um, you know, we're going to, you know, we don't, above moderate typically, um, boils down to new single family, you know, housing, you know, to, uh, uh, you know, the, the majority of what we're producing is apartments in Arcata right now. And there's not a whole lot of new single family housing going in. There are very few, uh, you know, single family housing, uh, vacant lots, um, where we're gonna develop, uh, that. And so, you know, the, that's not really, um, you know, an area that's ripe for us. And, you know, certainly there's, there's no more areas like, you know, Diamond Driver, California, where we have our, our higher income, um, you know, housing stock. The, I guess, silver lining, if you could call it that, is that, um, housing prices are going up so, uh, much based on the, uh, you know, dearth of supply that even modest homes built now would probably qualify as, uh, above moderate, uh, income housing. So any new housing stock that gets built that's, you know, a single family is gonna fall into that category. And I think really where we're, um, you know, seeing our ability to produce additional, um, you know, upper income housing into the future is in, you know, multi-story condoed projects where, you know, you might have, um, you know, for sale units in a multifamily, um, you know, building. At this point, you know, our, our commitment to, uh, you know, infill, uh, and not extending onto, you know, the bottom lands or up into the hillsides uh, to, to meet our, our growth and development needs, uh, really, you know, uh, drives to that conclusion, I think, as, as sort of the, you know, the, the largest potential resource for above moderate housing.
Wonderful. Um, that's all my questions. Thanks, Director Loya.
Can, I had a little bit of trouble, uh, following, so please forgive me if my questions are redundant. Um, it said, I thought I read somewhere that, oh no, I did. It said the count, the Planning Commission reviewed it. I was just wondering if they, if they voted on it.
Yeah, they, they adopted a resolution to, um, to approve it as, um, presented.
Was it a unanimous vote?
Um, yeah, it was.
Great, excellent. And then, can you give a brief update about the major projects or units that are currently under building permit review or pending approval?
Um, I can, uh, give you a little bit of a hand waving update. I don't have the data in front of me right now and I apologize. I'm not at my desk, so I can't pull it up. If you had specific projects in mind, I'd, I'd be happy to speak to those.
How about the Westwood project?
The Westwood project, okay. Uh, and I may, may lean a little bit on, uh, uh, City Engineer Potry, uh, to find out where we are in the, um, whether we've received building permits for those, uh, or not. But yeah, there's a, uh, property owned by, uh, Strombeck Properties in the Westwood neighborhood. Um, and we either have received a building permit or will shortly receive a building permit for about 100 units to be added to that site. And so those, those would be likely permitted and, um, you know, under construction in 2022. Um, we're able to count them as soon as on, on our, um, uh, housing element, uh, reports, as soon as we issue the building permits. And so those will come on to our, um, you know, our account for this year.
Could you give me a better idea where that is?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, you know, where Westwood Market is?
Yeah.
Off of Alliance, uh, and then there's...
Murphy's, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Murphy's, Murphy's Market. Showing my age here, I guess, maybe. Uh, it's been Murphy's for quite some time. Um, and then there's the, uh, Arcade Gardens Apartments, um, right next to it, just to the south. So there's the apartment complex just, uh, behind, uh, that, um, that's the Westwood Apartments, uh, just to the west of the Arcade Gardens Apartments. They're kind of tucked back in there.
And are they gonna be like single family homes with in-law units or where do they get, is it gonna be apartments?
Yeah, it's apartment buildings.
Okay. Um, how about the Creekside project?
Um, Creekside is, uh, you know, I don't have, um, an update on, uh, Creekside, where they're at right now. I know that there's, uh, you know, potential negotiation with the prospective buyer to, um, uh, to take that project on into new ownership. But they, they have not submitted building permits. They have not submitted any additional, um, you know, permit requests for, for planning to, you know, continue the lot split or anything like that.
Thanks. Uh, could you please explain what deed restricted and non-deed restricted means?
Absolutely. So a deed restricted unit is one where we've recorded a regulatory agreement or other, um, you know, instrument on title that requires that it be limited to certain income levels. And so, um, you know, for example, with the, um, you know, the Soral Place, we entered into, uh, loan agreements, uh, to help finance the project, um, grant agreements to help finance the project. And then as a part of that financing... And then as a part of that financing, we also require a recordation of a regulatory agreement that limited the rents of those units to uh various income levels in the low, very low and extremely low income uh categories for um I believe a period of fifty-five years. And so once you enter a deed restriction um of that type, then you can record it as a deed restricted portable unit. Uh there are others that are uh market rates affordable, if you will. And so um they're, they're a little bit harder to classify and quantify, but the state will allow us to count um units that are renting at rates that would be affordable to persons that qualify as very low income or low income. And so those would be non-deed restricted.
Thanks. Is the number of ADUs being built increasing every year?
No, in fact, um we had a little bit of a burst. We were anticipating uh seeing more ADUs um at one point, but we typically um you know, project about ten per year. And we're hitting about that average of about ten per year. Typically, ADUs fall into the uh the moderate income category unless we can prove otherwise.
Um how many ADU permits are pending for two thousand twenty-two, do you know?
I do not.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question related to that? Um so I mean, you guys, I guess you said it's sa- staying pretty sta- stable, but have you seen or expect any growth of that because of SB nine?
You know, that, it's really interesting, um you know, there are a lot of factors that go into to bu- building. Um and you know, one of the the primaries is uh you know, cost, you know, can I afford to build it? So we had a couple of uh you know, really strong bills that um you know, put development decisions in the hands of private landowners in SB nine, which allows for small lot subdivisions. And in recent uh um improvements, I guess I'll say, to the accessory dwelling unit law. Um and we did see a little bit of an uptick. Um right now, things have tamped down a little bit, and I suspect that's related to the cost of building uh right now, which is uh at about four hundred dollars a square foot, which is in, you know, uh an all-time high, it's very high right now. Um if the market, you know, returns to normal, if you will, I think that, you know, there are a lot of uh you know, individual decisions that will be made. Um SB nine certainly has the potential to, you know, carve up uh communities that were planned, you know, around single-family to um housing and make them feel a little bit more like multifamily neighborhoods. Um you know, and as does the AD laws uh that are on the books right now. Um but I, we haven't, we just, we haven't seen that happen in the market yet.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh the state required annual report um is very helpful for tracking our regional housing needs allocation requirement and uh keeping the council engaged in the community where um yeah, keeping the council engaged, community wherever progress. Would it be possible to provide an update about our progress every six months rather than once a year?
Um it would be possible. Um. I I guess we can have a, you know, more in-depth conversation about, you know, the the nature of that um update and what specifically we're uh hoping to get out of uh those updates. Um because, you know, there is um, you know, there's quite a bit of staff time that goes into uh preparing uh this particular report. Uh but certainly if there are, you know, subject areas that are, you know, of a particular interest where, you know, it might be more timely to provide uh more regular updates, um you know, the, I think, I think we'd be happy to do that. In addition, I'd like to, you know, try and improve on um, you know, this report as we're going through the, you know, general plan update process. Uh you know, you know, over the course of next year or so. You know, I think it, it's also a very uh opportune time to sort of think about how we want to not only convey our uh you know, our values through policy, but also how we um you know, set up systems to, you know, maintain accountability and ensure that we're actually meeting those objectives that we've established for ourselves. And so I, I think that, you know, my my goal would be that through this process, we would have um, you know, a uh a new format for the the annual report um next time around uh that has uh you know, a little bit more uh clear nexus and tie to to some of the accountability measures. So I guess kind of, you know, hitting on a question that you asked and a question you didn't ask.
Thank you. Um. So is it correct we're mandated to build over two hundred and sixty above moderate income level units?
We are required to provide um a land base, appropriately zoned land, that would allow for that number of above moderate units to be built. We don't currently have that on the books. I couldn't point to anywhere in Arcata where we could create that um, you know, real readily. And I do think that, you know, the um, you know, the the high-density planning work that we're doing in and around the downtown and you know, what hopefully will come into the future for, you know, Valley West and St. Louis in particular. Um it'll provide areas where developers could come and build um you know, that that upper income housing. And in fact, one of the hallmarks for, you know, the gateway area plan that we're working on right now is that we would want to see um mixed income uh buildings as well as uh, you know, mixed use. And so you might have a building that has um, you know, a mix of, you know, lower income to, you know, over above moderate income units inside of it.
Thanks. Um according, I'm looking at this chart on packet page one twenty-four, I think it's the only chart in here. And it says total units to date, uh there were thirty-three above moderate units developed so far. I was just wondering if you could give more detail about where those units were developed.
I don't have the detailed information on the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions. Thanks, David.
Do we have any members of the public that are wanting to comment on this?
Uh who uh would like to make a public comment on the item of our annual report on the general plan on Zoom, please raise your hand. Or pressing star nine on your phone. I see no public comment on Zoom.
Hey, do we have anyone that is here in person that would like to comment on this item?
More of a question than um than a comment. So I was wondering with the Valley West and the St. Louis um area that we want to upzone, would, I was just wondering if that would be um housing or houses, like single-family homes? Um and um hmm so, and so if that, or if it would just be more apartments and um high-end condos as what's proposed mostly in the gateway area. And um might suggest, maybe my comment would be suggesting townhomes to be reconsidered again for the gateway area and those areas, because I know that is um something that comes up a lot from people of actually being interested in townhomes um is to fill that upper um, you know, the the um upper areas of of um our homes. So anyways, so thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Anyone else?
Um my name's Joanne McCarry and I um am just curious about um the state requirements. Are they kind of uniform for any type of um municipality, uh whether we're a small rural college town as compared to a um moderate-sized um Central Valley town or a coastal uh town in Southern California? I'm just trying to figure out, especially with our Polytechnic and the university acquiring a lot of property um in town. Um is it sort of just a regimented number that is given? And can Humboldt County and Arcata sort of uh suggest that we're maybe a little bit different? And trying to meet certain numbers for certain categories of housing may not be because of our infrastructure issues and our healthcare uh challenges uh for getting quality healthcare personnel up here. Um many of those issues, uh is there any appeal opportunity with the state? And that's one of my questions to see if, do we have to follow along on this eight-year cycle to get the numbers in all these categories with all the special things that are happening within our community? So um I sometimes think if we aim to get a certain number just because that's what the state says, you know, maybe we can say, well, you know, look at, this is what we're up against. And so I just sort of want to put that out there, that maybe um we don't need to meet the exact high number because we have all these other issues underlying um that that are, that are challenging us obtaining that number. I just want to put that out there, especially with the university and all its um efforts being made inside our town.
Um Director Loia, if you're still on, would you mind, um you know, that that is a a pretty popular question that Joanne was asking about how how it's figured out and do we have any room for pushback? Could you just briefly answer that?
Yeah, um there is a little bit of a conversation with Department of Finance who produces the uh the housing numbers uh when we're going through our our regional housing needs allocation process. But the the conversation is usually pretty one-sided, I'll be perfectly frank, unless you can point out a an error in their their math, they're not typically revising their number. Um and so um that, there really is uh no way to push back on that. The county uh HCOG is giving, given the um, you know, the number and then the the various planning units within the county. Um you know, uh are engaged to to distribute the regional housing needs allocation. Um there's a formula that uh uh requires that you consider jobs and housing balance. Uh as a result, cities typically get a a fair chunk and the county usually gets a pretty fair chunk. Um and there's uh, those are distrib- distributed into the categories based on the state requirements. And so, yeah, to answer the question real directly, no, there's no real mechanism for pushback um other than just refusing to uh to adopt your housing element, to, you know, refuse to play the game. But if you do that, then um you know, there's pretty significant ne- negative consequences, both in terms of financial. Um you know, losses, uh you're no longer eligible for many state funding sources uh if you don't have a certified housing element as well as uh loss of local control. If you're not, if you don't have a certified housing element, then uh property owners, developers have the control to um uh you know, to have principally permitted developments without any kind of review uh as long as they meet some minimum uh affordable housing requirements. And so we've never really crossed that threshold before of saying, you know, we're just not going to do it. And there really is no mechanism for for pushback.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I think the one thing I would say about that is that that's why we've always sort of used this opportunity to you know, to make it as hyper-local as possible, that we understand the state's going to make us, you know, do something. We understand the state's going to require us to plan for something, so let's take, you know, as much control over that as possible and and make it as arcada as possible.
Thank you, Director Loia. Right, so we can either ask more questions or uh make a motion.
Sure, I move to adopt resolution number two twelve dash sixty-two approving the twenty twenty-one general plan annual progress report.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. So we have oral and written communications. And this time is provided for people to address the council on matters that were not on the agenda. Um so please raise your hand if you're on the Zoom webinar, um if you're on Zoom webinar or press star nine. Now, if you're on the phone line and you'd like to make a public comment, speakers in this section will be list limited to three minutes. When it is time for your public comment, you will be unmuted and invited to speak. So do we have anyone online?
Uh no public comment online.
Okay, if we have anyone that's in person that would like to, please make your way over to the podium. And I would just encourage whoever, you know, just to line up if you want to do that, um because I'm not going to keep calling it out, thanks.
Hello, um I'm here to oppose the Arcata Police Department receiving and using military equipment. This is in reference to Assembly Bill number four eighty-one, which requires law enforcement to obtain approval prior to receiving funding, acquisition and use of military equipment approved by the mayor and city council. Did you guys already decide on this?
We are act- um actively demilitarizing, correct? So we're not, we won't be, we will not be adding military equipment to our police department.
We won't, however, what you're seeing, and I don't know, but we will have an agenda item around statewide regulation that we have a policy around certain types of equipment that are on a list, not necessarily coming from the military, but even for us to to own and operate. For example, our um our incident command vehicle that we use for disasters and or incidences, you know, it's like a big RV is a piece of equipment that we are required to have that policy for. So you will see the city um bringing that policy forward to the council, as you will, in most cities in the state of California, because there are many pieces of equipment that are on that list. Uh but the city, the city council has actively asked that we return any previous military militarized equipment and rifles that we had, and all of that has been completed.
Okay, including like beanbag rifles and?
No, not necessarily. So we'll go through all of that, not on this agenda, though.
Okay, when can I come back for that?
Um probably within the next hmm two to three meetings. So you can feel free to reach out to me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm now Magretta, um in my official capacity as a volunteer for the city of Arcata. And I just wanted to report that I was successful and enjoyed um setting up the compost bins at the Saturday Earth Day Farmers Market Celebration and was successful in getting sixteen people to sign up to get um the Soil Saver um twenty-five-dollar compost bin, backyard compost bins that the city offers. And I'm hoping that soon they will be in those people's backyards and operating and food waste um will be put in them and kept out of the landfill and that um is a drop in the bucket. But um hopefully we'll fill that bucket up with food waste and it won't go to the landfill. And hopefully soon Humboldt County will get a local industrial composting area and we're not going to be shipping out our food waste and other organic matters to Yolo County and uh and big trucks, fossil fuels. But I also want to say that I really enjoyed um seeing flowers blooming on the lawn in front of City Hall. And I saw something that says, make it a no-mow May. And um especially if we're using gas-powered lawn mowers, let's just keep the flowers blooming and the grass growing through the month of May so that we're not spewing carbon emissions up into the atmosphere for at least this month. And um and maybe we can put a sign out saying that's what we're doing for the climate. So I just uh wanted to give you some input on that issue, so thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Hello, everybody. Um so I just want to talk about a little bit of some of um the ideas that are coming from the community about L Street and uh the um the pedestrian bicycle path. Um I know with the gateway um area plan, they want to put one of the main arteries through town on L Street. So they want to connect it from Samoa or from K Street to Samoa and um there's some land accu. Um there's some, they'd have to acquire some land um to do so, um that's a concern. And um also um there's um concern of just kind of taking away the quality of that bicycle pedestrian path by putting a a road through. Um so on the second um of April, the Historic Landmarks Committee um me, in a meeting for the local, for the Historic Landmarks Committee, um Gerald Tocano, um who is a preservation consultant working for Plan West um on the gateway plan. Um he um, he very eloquently talked about um the notable historic sites um which also included the L Street Railroad, um railroad corridor that was there. And um he uh, he talked about how important it was as an economic asset um and the planning should really integrate that part of Arcata's history. really integrate that part of Arcata's history into the planning. And it makes, he felt it makes a better entry into the city when our history is highlighted. And what a great gateway that bicycle path is into their city now. It is, or will be, part of the Great Rail Redwood Trail that is just, that just got, is becoming established and will connect San Francisco to Blue Lake. That corridor line is part of that trail. It's 320, 320 miles. And right now, those tracks belong to that entity, so it would be hard, so I'm proposing not to take the, to make it rail to trail, not rail to road. And really emphasizing that thing, we, it's a linear, it could be a linear park, which people are asking for, butcherball, table tennis. I know Sarah was excited about table tennis. And then it would really connect that Creamery District with visitors coming in on, by bicycle, to our area. So I think, I think it is an asset that we shouldn't really be forcing a road next to and taking those trail, that trail, putting it to those rails and putting it to the trail. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay, so we have oral and written communications. This time, oh, nope, we just did that, we're not redoing it. But thank you all for your oral and written communications. We have council and staff reports. Item A is an update from Emily Bonvy, Director of Environmental Services and Community Services, on progress towards compliance with Senate Bill 1383 to reduce organic waste.
Thank you. Good evening, council and community members. I am here this evening to give you an update on the city's compliance toward SB 1383, which is the short-lived climate pollutants, short-term known as the organic waste reduction requirements. This is the, I think, third time that an SB 1383-related item has come before this council. So I won't spend a lot of time on the jurisdiction responsibilities piece, but I did want to high-level refresh memories that there are roughly six different categories, so to speak, of compliance for this jurisdiction. The cornerstone being organics diversion out of the landfill and into essentially compost facilities. So wanting to highlight that, but there are a lot of other requirements, for example, establishing an edible food recovery program, education and outreach, procurement, jurisdiction must procure specified amounts of organic compost and recycled paper. So, so there's, there's a lot that is involved with 1383. But the main focus, or I shouldn't say the main focus, the most significant focus is establishing curbside collection of organics recycling, also known as composting. Whoops, I think this slide is out of order, so I'm going to jump back to it. So here's a timeline of some of the actions surrounding SB 1383 locally. I have the more quote-unquote "regional" aspects in the squares, and then the more city-specific actions are above in the ovals. So in March of 2021, the Solid Waste Local Task Force formed a 1383 ad hoc committee. And so essentially, this was all the jurisdictions coming together to try to develop a potential regional pathway toward SB 1383 compliance and what could that possibly look like. Fast forward a few months to July 6th, the local task force recommended that Humboldt Waste Management Authority Board develop and circulate a request for proposals for regional SB 1383 assistance. So essentially having an outside firm come in and assist all the jurisdictions regionally with laying out what specifically is needed to comply and how we can potentially get there. In November of 2021, the Humboldt Waste Management Board authorized the 1383 contract, and that was awarded to Edgar and Associates. And most recently, at the end of April, the Solid Waste Local Task Force reviewed the compliance roadmap, which Edgar and Associates had developed. So those are the regional milestones, if you will. In October, as we had, as I had updated last council meeting, I believe, on our edible food recovery, or our food waste prevention and recovery grants through CalRecycle, we had contracted with Zero Waste Humble and Juliet Bone and Associates to complete an edible food recovery capacity assessment. That assessment, as a side note, is required by the county, or it's required that the county submit. However, Arcata and Eureka have their essential quote-unquote "pieces" completed, so there's a little relationship there. And then in February of this year, which was the most recent time, we were before council, the council authorized the middle of the notification of intent to comply. So I'll jump back a slide, see if I can, there we go. So the notification of intent to comply, as a refresher, essentially delays any potential administrative fees from CalRecycle on the city for, for one year. So 2022 potential administrative penalties would be delayed until 2023. There's a lot of text on this slide. I did want to point out two key items, which are the terms extenuating circumstances and substantial effort. So while the city has a year to come into compliance with 1383, there are extenuating circumstances or a substantial effort that could apply where certain elements of compliance could take longer than being fully up and running by 2023. So my hope is not to delve too deeply into the compliance roadmap itself, but really focus on some of the key next steps. And when I say key next steps, it is not all-encompassing of everything needed to fully come into compliance. It's really with the lens of what do we need to do next, like within the next nine months or one year. There's a lot of them, so I have them broken down. The other thing I wanted to note is that it's not chronological order and it's not sequential. Certain things can happen concurrently and parallel, certain things are sequential, so just wanting to note that the order that I place them in is not necessarily the order that everything needs to occur in. So, one really critical step is the identification of a short-term organics waste processing facility. So the short-term timeframe is anticipated to be within the next, up until the next five years or so. The plan that has been outlined in Edgar Associates is to have out-of-county hauling for organics until such time that an in-county facility could be developed. And so that's more in the five-to-10-year timeline. Another element is to draft an ordinance and receive public input. So this is the quote-unquote "enforcement" piece, or this is the piece that establishes local authority for implementing and complying with SB 1383. The identification of a short-term organics waste processing facility, whoops, sorry, I forgot I duplicated, amending the franchise agreement is another piece. And so we're currently under franchise with Recology, and so to enable Recology to collect organics waste, we'll need to amend that franchise agreement. And that could include a lot of other elements related to 1383, but the primary piece is the collection of organics. After the franchise agreement amendment piece comes into play, there will be adoption of curbside collection rates. And so that's the funding mechanism for the universal organics curbside collection piece. Sourcing curbside collection infrastructure, so in other words, potentially trucks and bins, that will have to come after the franchise agreement amendment theoretically, and that would be on the hauler. And then development of mandatory education and outreach plan. As I alluded to earlier, there's mandatory education and outreach in a couple different lenses of 1383. So there's education and outreach around what materials can go in what bins, for example, or edible food recovery programs, how to donate food, that sort of thing. So our consultants will be assisting in development of an overall plan, and there will certainly be regional collaboration opportunities. Similarly, an edible food recovery program will need to be developed. That has been outlined in the compliance roadmap. And that will be a consultant essentially identifying what, what our existing program looks like and then what gaps are needed to be filled with fully complying with the edible food recovery piece. So one example is generators are required to be under contract with food recovery organizations. And I don't expect there's a lot of contracts, if any, between food recovery organizations and generators currently, so that could be part of an edible food recovery program. And then another piece going into that edible food recovery program is the completion of a food rescue capacity analysis. So as I mentioned earlier, Arcata and Eureka are a little ahead of the curve. We had some additional grant funds, so we've had our food rescue capacity analysis completed locally, and then that will feed into the region. One thing I should have mentioned at the outset of some of these key next steps is I do have in parentheses who would potentially be the lead for all of these different elements. And so Humboldt Waste Management Authority is key to certain elements, such as the identification of a hauling facility or a processing facility, as well as being able to separate the materials locally to ship those out of county temporarily. The franchise hauler has certain obligations, for example, sourcing the infrastructure. Our consultant is taking the lead on a number of elements, and then there are certain elements that the city really will need to lead. So for example, the franchise agreement and the rates was really a full-city-run element, as well as the ordinance. So I just wanted to speak briefly to some of those different relationships. Oh, and I forgot the last one, which is procurement analysis and recommendations. So again, our consultant will be leading procurement analysis and coming up with recommendations for how the city can meet our organics procurement targets. So this slide really outlines the near-term council decision points. As I mentioned before, the ordinance will be a piece that the council will need to adopt, and there will be a public process component that goes along with that. Same with the franchise agreement amendment. And I realize one thing I left out of this slide was the rates, as well, will need to come to council. So those are the larger and nearer-term council decision points. I do expect that SB 1383-related elements will come to the council in different ways in the next couple of years as we go forward. So with that, I am happy to answer any particular questions. I kept this pretty high level, and again, I'm happy to delve more deeply into any of the topics, but my intent was really to keep it high level and kind of talk about all the different categories in brief and delve into conversations as needed.
We definitely appreciate the update, Deputy Director Benvy, and do we have any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you once again for so nicely distilling such complicated things into really easily understandable slides. So thank you, it is a lot.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks, too, and I appreciate the, the constant updates on it, because I know it's going to be a big thing for the, the city and the entire county to take on. So just thank you for, yeah, everything.
Yeah, thanks. So the question, so sometimes we get updates, it's like a regular agenda item, and then sometimes they're under staff reports, and I was just wondering how we decide, what's the criteria if it's a regular agenda item or if it's a staff report?
Typically, if it's an agenda item, there is some action that the council would be taking. If we're not anticipating any action, it really is just an update on progress, then it goes under the staff reports. But there are, at times, items that make their way onto an old business item or a new business item that don't have immediate council action, but for the most part, that's the distinguishing characteristic.
Do we have any other staff reports?
We do have one public comment on this.
Oh, okay, let's, go ahead.
Go ahead, Isaac.
Hello, my name's Isaac West. I'm with Full Cycle Compost, and we're, you know, interested in this issue...
I'm sorry, Isaac, could you start again?
Yeah, no problem. I might even try and get my video to work here, I'm not sure where that is. But, yeah, my name's Isaac West, I'm with Full Cycle Compost. We're a local cooperative based out of Arcata, and this issue is pertinent to us, and we really want to help the city and all of Arcata with complying with SB 1383. And we have currently been using a decentralized model where we pick up residential food scraps from people's homes, curbside, and then we bring it to local gardens and schools and things that we partnered with. And this model works really well. It hasn't cost us a whole lot, you know, versus like shipping out of county is really expensive. And so, you know, in one, partly, we really want to make the point that having this, a decentralized composting could be good for Arcata, or even in combination with an eventual central processing facility. It would be nice to, seeing this coming in the future, carve out space for small businesses like us and the local worm guy to still be able to operate, but obviously, you know, we can't take on the entire city, so Recology's going to probably take on a lot of the composting. But it would be nice to see a kind of hybrid blend, where we have room for small businesses to still operate, but Recology can still, you know, go to the hospital and take these giant loads. And so we really are just trying to kind of envision how we can collaborate on a model that leaves room for everyone.
Thank you for that.
I'd be happy to weigh in a little bit on that, which is, as Isaac mentioned, the decentralized location, decentralized compost collection program. There's actually a term called community composting, which is outlined in SB 1383. What it is, is it is reflective of small-scale decentralized compost facilities. Generally, the threshold is about 200 cubic yards per year, which would be 750, what is it, 750? Forgetting the 750, but it's about, it's about 100 square feet and about 200, sorry, 200 tons, 750 cubic yards, there it is, that defines the, the community composting facility. And so certainly with some of our smaller local composting businesses in mind at the outset in hiring the consultant through HWMA, that was part of the RFP, as well as part of the interview questions, which was to look into options to potentially balance having that universal collection, as well as potentially having community composting sites in a way that they don't infringe upon the franchise agreement. Certainly, there's a lot of work to be done in that space, but there are ways and there are case studies, for example, San Diego and Santa Cruz, who have come up with a balance. I also wanted to speak a little bit on likely volume. So really quick back-of-the-napkin calculations, using the maximum capacity of community composting allowances, which is that 200 tons per year, it would be about 15 community composting sites required in the city of Arcata. So just to put a little bit of scale, and those numbers were derived from Edgar and Associates, who I believe derived theirs from the Humboldt Waste Management Authority Waste Characterization Report. So they're certainly an estimate, but I wanted to put, put a little bit of description behind that concept. And the other thing that wasn't a particular question tonight, but it has been a question in the past that I wanted to speak to a little bit as well, is backyard composting is allowed per SB 1383. There's a little bit more, I'll use the term QAQC, so quality assurance, associated with making sure that residents are backyard composting properly to, to be able to use that what's called self-hauling exemption. But that is a pathway as well that can be wrapped into overall compliance, and I know that that has come up in the past, so I wanted to speak to that as well.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other council reports?
Okay, I'll just jump in and remind everyone that June is actually arriving soon, and it will be Oyster Fest, and Main Street is working on that. And just to keep reminding people, it is, it will be in the Creamery District again this year. Just, we have capacity issues and are just not ready to be able to serve that many people on the plaza. So it is a ticketed event, and so if you are wanting to participate, to go to the Arcata Main Street website and get your tickets. And that's all I have, so, looks like meeting...
And the ticket includes a cup, which is a pretty good deal. And then you don't, you create no waste while enjoying the lovely Oyster Fest.
Thank you, yes. All right, so with that, we are actually going to adjourn in a special way this evening. So we'd like to do so in honor of our past council member, Mayor and colleague, Tea Gast. So with that, everyone have a wonderful evening. Thank you. colleague, Tea Gast. So with that, everyone have a wonderful evening. Thank you.